Ms. Pritchard, could you be kind enough to produce more?
That's what we stand our secretary to do.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
District Board of Education, the boarder. Let's see, we'll call everybody who is here. Thank you very much. Let's all stand with flags.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, approval of the agenda to have someone make a motion for move item four, F two to F one and F one to F two if that's possible. We're just switching the order on those. So, item six. This is probably looking at his name. One other added on the agenda, I had C two. We should read Black and Ladder County in the resolution and not Los Angeles County. Where are you at, C two? C two. Send it to all you in high school district and district within Los Angeles County. I'm trying to find that. Under the action. Motion for resolution. Oh, from the resolution. From the resolution. Oops, okay. No problem. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. So we have motion in a second to approve the agenda with the switch and the order from F two to F one. Is there any discussion before we move on now? Okay. Off the paper. Aye. Aye. Close. Yes, item one, item two, excuse me. All right, public comments. Let's see here, I want to remind everybody that during public comments and side of your slip that each speaker has three minutes, the clock is right there. Please come up to the podium. We'll start with Karen Jones. Hi Karen.
Hello. Nice to see you all again. It's been bothering other people, but I thought today would be a good day to come back. So, three minutes, here we go. I'm not sure of all the details, but people in the community are a little bit worked up over some incident involving young people coming to school wearing Trump hats and t-shirts and doing this. A-okay. And this, if you look it up on Wikipedia by the way, it means a-okay, it doesn't mean anything, but whatever, whatever it means, it's like this didn't mean I was against a Vietnam War. I may or may not have been, but it's a common hand sign that we've seen. But it, to me, it really gets down to something more important, and that's that we're not teaching our kids, where they're doing most of their learning by the way, about the importance of individual freedom and how the Constitution, which everybody on this board agreed to uphold when you took office, the Constitution guarantees us individual rights, not group protection. Because the rights of the individual are the most important rights. If you don't expect or respect individual rights, the freedom of speech, freedom of religion, freedom of thought, if you don't respect that, then you don't respect minority rights. So, to this, this thing that I'm seeing happening across the country, maybe it's worldwide, but I'm concerned with the exceptional country I live in, America, that when someone disagrees with someone, and I've had it happen to me, racist, you're a racist, bigot, homophobe, racist. Because I have a point that they can't counter, they call me names. And so it really bothers me if high school kids are being intimidated, and I've watched, I've just watched, watched life. But I've watched this school board in particular, and I just told my husband before I came here, if they were wearing Stronger Together, Wear With Her shirts on Patriots Day, that would have been, that photo would have been leaked to the local paper as a way to get around campaign stuff, or showing support for collectivism, pro-union collectivism, really anti-individual rights stuff. So, it just is really discouraging, even though I already knew it was happening, I have never paid you for a type to do that, Superintendent Corey, and I don't know if you did or didn't accuse people of, oh, about this was, accusing kids that this was a racist sign, making this while they wore things supporting our president on Patriots Day, and you can shake your head that that's not it, I'm expressing my opinion, I'm expressing what I believe here, and that's a fundamentally American right that you don't see in other places, and why many of us think it is so important to protect the culture of America, the one place in the world where you really have this right guaranteed, and I see it eroded, and that is a great concern. Remember your oath, board, remember to always respect the rights of the individual and the law of freedom of speech and thought. Thank you.
Demi Andrews.
A photographer staged a group photo shoot in the midst of after-school pickup chaos on the campus. True to their age, the group engaged in a bit of nonsense for the camera. Coincidentally, there was an adult racialist, I'll refer to as a brown shirt, who misinterpreted the youth's actions and slandered them, immediately reporting to school authorities. School personnel promptly condemned the use of alleged negative behavior, but didn't stop there. A school employee threatened to retract college letters of recommendation written on behalf of students. Weirdly, this all took place before anyone had spoken to the students. School personnel had not yet questioned the students for an explanation about the photo shoot nonsense. Brown shirts use various methods of intimidation for political purposes. They report to authorities, who then inform the target their life can be destroyed based on lies. We can keep you out of the college you choose, the job, the apartment, or the club. What happened here must never take root. I urge this board to uphold your oath of office. Take swift and decisive action. Immediately terminate the employment contracts of all personnel who participated in the smear and abuse of these children. Make no mistake, this is how it starts, and we know how it ends.
Lammy Johnston.
I keep getting handed all these things. Apparently, one of the problems was when this photograph was taken for the yearbook, is that correct, the yearbook? Some of the kids went like this. When I grew up, this meant okay, and I think every single one of you would agree on, with me, on that. Just ahead of something, this is thanks to the new interpretation, a 2017 hoax campaign started by members of the notorious website 4chan. Anyway, so that sort of gets rid of what this is all about. I'll tell you what disturbs me. I've lived here now for a little more than thirty years. I love this school, I've been proud of this school, but in the last few years, no, I have not been. There has been a segue in this school, a segue into teaching, not too much left, not too much right, actually, too much left, not enough, middle of the road. For what happened to these kids the other day, two weeks ago, is a complete embarrassment to our community, it should be a complete embarrassment to this board, some of which my votes went to some of you. And I'm ashamed of, I'm ashamed of our school, I am ashamed of some of the teachers here, and my heart bleeds for the students. And please, make it right, and be more objective, and teach your teachers to be more objective in their teaching. Thank you.
Michelle, the board.
Good afternoon, members of the board, Superintendent Corey. Last month, unanimously fired two beloved staff members, Kathy Rick and Gordon White, who positively impacted the classrooms, impacted the classrooms and have impeccable long-term employment records. You also punished some classified staff with thirty furlough days. My question for the Superintendent Corey and members of the board is, how could you with good conscience fire Kathy and Gordon when you fully were informed that Principal Swanitz was not only, had one letter of reprimand for unprofessional conduct in his file for a DUI offense fourteen months ago, but also had a second letter of reprimand in his file for an incident that happened just eight months ago? Why does the man even have a job, given two terminable offenses in his employment record? You had three board meetings in March, before March fifteenth was the deadline not to renew Principal Swanitz's contract, a perfect time to cut our losses during a budget crisis, don't you think? I will paraphrase the first letter of reprimand from Superintendent Corey to Mark Swanitz. You were arrested for allegedly driving under the influence of alcohol. As a result of this incident, significant and sustained media coverage ensued. The impact of coverage has resulted in the compromising of our school district's excellent reputation. As well, the focus on the incident has caused the attention, energy, and resources of the district to shift in order to address this impact. Even more importantly, the credibility of your leadership has been compromised with the students, the staff, and community you serve. As a school leader, your actions are always subject to a higher standard of accountability. The letter continues, but I'm short on time. Eight months later, a second letter of reprimand for Principal Swanitz goes into his file, failure to communicate or follow protocol, from Superintendent Corey. Principal Swanitz intentionally elected to report an accident in the school's theater that resulted from a student being coached to hang upside down, some distance from the ground, with his legs wrapped around in silks, falling from the air to the floor and being driven to the ER, and whose health and education was compromised. There was an email complaint about the district's lack of compliance, and the complaint register enlisted concerns and claims. The email established the fact that parents' concerns and claims were significant, and Mark Swanitz chose not to tell Superintendent about the incident. Failure to report this type of incident put the district at possible financial risk via litigation. These letters of reprimand were signed by Superintendent Corey and Principal Swanitz. Again, why did the board keep Swanitz with full knowledge of his sketchy employment record and fire Kathy and Gordon? And did Superintendent Corey provide you with all the negative response that the community submitted to the district, parent letters, after Swanitz's DUI, before you made the decision to cut Kathy and Gordon? Thank you.
Let's go on to item six, which is reports and presentations. Can I start with the principal's report, Mr. Swanitz?
Thank you, I'd like to begin with a couple of presentations. This afternoon, we have two special presentations. The first is that each spring, a faculty-nominated committee selects a worthy female junior student to receive the Wellesley Book Award. Today with us is, is Alice McCurdy, a member of the Santa Barbara Chapter of the Wellesley Alumni Club, who will be making the presentation to this year's awardee.
Thank you, Mr. Swanitz and all members. I am happy to be here representing Wellesley College and presenting an award to one of your students. Wellesley is one of the world's preeminent colleges for women, and its mission is to provide an excellent education for women who will make a difference in the world. Every spring, we have awards that we make to outstanding junior students. This year, the book that's being awarded is the Norton Book of Women's Lives, which is a collection of twentieth-century literature from women's autobiographies, journals, and memoirs. The students are selected for this award based on their excellent academic achievements, as well as the contributions they have made to the communities. I'm very pleased to present this award to your student, Ms. Olivia Cora Posse, and to congratulate her on behalf of the college. Thank you.
Our second award this afternoon, second presentation. Each year since 2003, the Santa Inez Valley Rotary Club has sponsored the Santa Barbara County Architectural Design Competition, held here at Santa Inez High School, for high school students from across the county. Students are given an architectural design challenge, and they have given one full day to work out a solution and prepare sketches and drawings to solve that problem. Students whose designs are chosen as finalists are then invited back to a second day to participate in a design charrette, in which they are interviewed by a panel of professional architects and industry experts, and are given opportunity to defend and explain their solution. So, I, let's see, oh, before this year, in sixteen-year history of the competition, Santa Inez High School students had won seven of these competitions, nearly twice as many as any other school in the county. EP is the nearest rival with four. Two of those victories belong to a single student who won the competition in both his freshman and senior years. I am pleased to announce that this year's winner brought home her eighth victory, also in her freshman year, and has done, has now had the chance to repeat three-peat or four-peat in the next three years. So, I would like to invite our winner up to receive her certificate and ask her to present the school's perpetual trophy to you, Mrs. Pritchard. So please help me welcome freshman Olivia Don. That will be on display outside of my office for the next year, until she wins it again. Our next report will come from our ASB board rep, Viviana Sidiya.
Good afternoon, I am ASB board rep, Viviana Sidiya. And at ASB, we've been invested on the planning for prom 2019, that happens to be right around the corner. We couldn't be any more excited to finally announce the official theme for prom this Thursday. We are determined to make the last school dance better than all the ones before. We've started filling out purchasers and discussing our inspiration for this dance as a class. We are excited to see the students respond and eventually see the final product on May eleventh. Thank you so much. Any questions?
Prom is at the Alexol.
All right, a few other comments and remarks. First of all, mid-fourth quarter ends this Thursday, April eighteenth, that means there are just about five weeks left in the school year of instruction before the final exam period begins. We are continuing this month to administer the California Assessment of Performance in Progress. We have completed the math portion and the science portion, and began the, sorry, completed the English portion and the science portion, began the math portion today. So we anticipate that being done by the end of next week, at which point, we will be ramping up and gearing up to go into AP testing, which begins on May sixth, and that will take the better part of about two weeks of May. In addition to the year-long, or the end-of-year testing, we're also ramping up for the final push for our graduation activities to celebrate the class of 2019, which will begin, as Viviana pointed out, with prom on May eleventh, followed up by baccalaureate on May nineteenth, senior awards night on May twenty-second, the senior car decorating day on May twenty-third, the Magic Mountain Grad Night on May twenty-third, also graduation practice on May thirtieth, and then of course, the commencement ceremony and the PTSA Grad Night Party on May thirty-first. So, one thing, if you haven't been around for it, that you might be interested in doing is dropping by on the morning of the twenty-third, when the parents are decorating the cars to the parking lot, this is a celebratory fiesta. We often, we often, early and often remind seniors about their participation in school-sponsored senior activities, and that it is dependent on their continued good attendance and good behavior, leading up to and during all of these activities. So, let's see, on Tuesday, March nineteenth, I hosted the third and final parent ambassador meeting with this year's cohort. This group was particularly engaged and interested throughout the course of four meetings this year, I was really pleased to be a part of, a part of that. They were so impressed with the program that they are committed to recruiting more members for next year's cohort. Same can be said about Student Senate, which met for the third and final time on April twelfth. I shared with Scott the other day that my, I'm so pleased that he pushed me to organize the Student Senate and involve the student voice in our campus a little bit more, because those meetings are my favorite milestones each year. The opportunity to engage the students about issues which just don't come up when I talk to kids out on campus has been really refreshing, and they have some really great insights that they provided me. So very happy to be able to do that. On April tenth, People Helping People held a town hall meeting here on campus to discuss drug and alcohol use amongst teens in the valley, and that was yet another prom in our attempt to educate parents in the community about the dangers of vaping and drugs and alcohol on our campus. They will be giving a similar presentation of the California Healthy Kids Survey data to you, but they followed up the presentation on the tenth with a panel of community experts who took questions from the audience and answered prepared questions. It was very enlightening, I was happy to see some current and former board members in attendance, so thank you for being there.
First real quick, we will have People Helping People, Barry Conway, and Jennifer Carrera, is that that data in there?
For those who need to track such things, the next principal's coffee will be April twenty-sixth in my office. Finally, after initially rolling out the NGSS Science Sequence by introducing Living Earth and Honors Living Earth courses to freshmen this year, we are making a quick course correction for a variety of reasons, and you will be approved, or you'll be asked to approve Physics of the Universe and Physics of the Universe Honors in the June, in your June meeting, and that class will be our new freshman-level class, and we're changing the sequence of the classes. So freshmen beginning this year took Living Earth first, they'll take Physics of the Universe as sophomores, and then Chemistry and the Earth Systems as juniors. Freshman, the incoming freshman class will switch to Physics and the Living Earth Sequence. And last thing I wanted to mention, as far as announcements go, is Ashley Quelo, who was our math teacher who represented us in the 2019 Santa Barbara Teacher of the Year Competition, was selected as a finalist, brought her down to the top four in the county, narrowly missed being selected as our Teacher of the Year candidate, but nevertheless, very proud of her for, the committee was very complimentary of her teaching and the contribution she makes to, and the impact she has within our school community, and we are very proud of that she has an opportunity to be nominated again in the future. My last couple of minutes, I've been asked to, pardon, I've been asked to share with you some details about our Niels Brock Solving Program. The Niels Brock Solving Program, this is a brief overview of that. First of all, it consists of two components, an academic program and a home stay program. The academic program involves an educational partnership with the Copenhagen Business College in Denmark, the Niels Brock Copenhagen Business College. They send students here, I apologize, my daughter, she doesn't get that I'm here. The Niels Brock Copenhagen Business College, it's a tuition-based program, so their students come over here, they send about twenty-eight students each year, we've been doing this since 2013. It all began when Anya Eskildsen came to, the president of Niels Brock, came to Solving, had a meeting with then-mayor Jim Richardson, wanted to find out how she could bring Danish students to study in Santa Inez Valley and solving in particular. They called former Superintendent Paul Turble down, they had a great meeting about it, they hammered out some details, and the following fall, we welcomed our first cohort of Danish students, paying tuition, having American teachers teach their Danish curriculum, and participating in approximately fourteen-week program. This required us to get approval by the State Department to be able to offer education to F one visa students, so we are now participating in the Student Exchange Visitor Information Service, or SEVIS, and we have to get those kids approved through that system, through the State Department each year. And our seventh cohort of students is now nearing the end. Two years, for the first five years of the program, we offered it in the fall, in the last two years, we have been offering it in the spring at their request. So the last group, the seventh group is here currently, and will be going home just after graduation. The second component of their stay is their home stay program. That's obviously what it sounds like, it's their opportunity to live in our community, experience what it's like to be like an American family. Their host families are recruited as a separate component from us, the school is not responsible for arranging the home stays or for supervising or monitoring the home stays. That's done by two employees, the local women who are employed by Niels Brock College, Uta Ikinder and Connie Nelson. They coordinate not only the stays for the students and the families, and the payments to the families for the positive expenses for their residents, their guests, but they also participate in community, planning community activities, so the Danish students that are here, while they are here, engage in our local community in various ways. They, when they are here, at times when there are parades, they will march in a parade for Danish heritage, when they have an opportunity to do so, they volunteer at the Overboy Museum, when they, presently, they're working with the Solving City Council on a tourism initiative, and trying to determine how we can improve tourism, make the experience better for guests, they're doing some actual surveying on the streets of students, and they participated in a panel of outside visitors coming to this community to explain, to talk to the supervisor or the councilman about their experience and what they see that they like and what they see that they don't like. So, it's been a really good program, it gives our students, our students on campus, an opportunity to engage with international students and learn more from them. Some great friendships have been made, and some of our former classes have come back and visited their host families and their host sisters and brothers, and it's been a really good, Miss Lewis has a host family, was a host family, has a host daughter who lives still, keeps in touch. So it's been a really strong, positive program for our community, our school community, and I'm happy to say we're.
Mark, do you think it will continue?
We anticipate it continuing, we signed the contract for next year, just a few months ago, and so we are definitely going at least for one more year. I don't have any expectations, anticipation of us not doing it unless circumstances change. Any other questions?
Questions for Mark?
At this point, again, we're, we would have been compensated for the extra time associated with teaching and those kinds of things, so it's always been a, you know, a positive situation for us. We have been dreaming for the money, we have lost money as a result of that, defensive changes remain to how that is funded, there's been a decrease, but we are still not recovering our costs associated with it, so we're waiting for our kids, community. It's really been a matter of luck, I think, for everybody over here.
Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome.
All right, Superintendent Corey, your report.
Sure, we would like to start with something actually very positive, so we have some one of the.
Mr. Corey, can you speak to the audience, we can't hear you.
Sure, I'll speak to the board and try and speak a little louder so you can hear as well. So, we have a, we've been doing department presentations, and so an opportunity for particularly the new board members to get to know our staff, the staff that we serve, and so we're fortunate tonight to hear from the Social Studies Department, so we have the members of the Social Studies Department that were able to make it this evening, and so they have a short presentation ready. But just so you can know about what they do, this is one of our great departments on campus, and so we're very fortunate to have these three gentlemen here, we'll let them introduce themselves, and, you know, very engaging photo right out of the show.
All right, well, thank you Superintendent Corey and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to meet with you briefly today. So we are the Social Studies Department.
The only people who can see what this nice gentleman is doing are you all, and we have to turn around. This is not right.
I'm sorry for interrupting this, but.
Sorry, I'm leaving, and anybody who wants to leave with me, you should leave.
Mr. Wolf, please.
This is ridiculous.
Okay, so my name is Greg Wolf, I am the department chair for Social Studies. I also teach the current enrollment, US History courses, and ASB Director as well. We have two other members here with us tonight, actually, I'll just mention, Mr. Mullin cannot be here tonight, and he teaches primarily AP courses, and then Janelle Martin is on leave, so she can either, she primarily teaches CP, US History.
Hello, everybody. My name is David Darty, I've been here for thirty years, and I'm proud to be in the purpose of finding this fine school, and I've taught a lot of different things over my thirty years here, but I've. And I've taught a lot of different things over my thirty years here, but I currently teach, um, sophomore world cultures, which is world history in most schools. And I also teach seniors, I teach, uh, American government, and I teach, uh, economics. And I also, uh, just in the last several years have taken over and been in charge of the, uh, driver's training program as well. So, I used to coach years ago and given that up, but I really enjoyed playing, my thirty years here.
My name is, my name is Gregory Dolpham, I am a graduate of San Andreas High School, class of nineteen ninety-five. And I will continue to argue that that class was one of the most, if not the most well-rounded classes out of the company hallway here, right? Yes, okay. Um, I was, had a wonderful experience at the school here, so I was absolutely, uh, you know, lost for words to be able to teach here. But I teach, um, social studies, sophomore world history, I teach freshman-focused class, Focus on Success, which is I, I kind of, uh, call the wake-up, you're not, uh, in middle school anymore and going to real world class. Um, and then I also help out with football, I help out with mock trial team, and then I'm also teaching the Danish students right now, uh, Business Econ. And I've been here for, this is my fifth year here.
And, but that you want to just explain?
Yeah, so, the Focus on Success class is a semester-long class that all freshmen are required to take. It will split the semester with an introduction to technology class taught by Mr. Peterschick. The, as I said before, the Focus on Success class is kind of a welcome to, uh, high school, you're not middle school anymore. And then from that, uh, all, all freshmen are required to take that, all freshmen are required to take that class. And then their sophomore year, they can, they can choose between the world cultures class that myself right now, I currently teach, and Mr. Doherty currently teaches. Again, he said it's kind of like the world history class from, um, as you would remember from the past. And then, or they, uh, their sophomore year, they can start taking, uh, AP courses, uh, particularly AP Euro. And we basically represent on that, since we don't have any history classes to look at, we base that on it, very much for the freshman year.
All right, and, uh, as you can see from the, uh, course listings up here, uh, the sequence sort of branches out of the pyramid a little bit, so they have one choice. Uh, and that is required, uh, as a freshman, uh, the focus, and then they have, um, college prep or AP, if they want to choose honors level for sophomore year. Junior year is where it branches out a little bit more, we throw in a third layer of, uh, option there, and that is the, um, concurrent enrollment, uh, US History course. Uh, so I teach, uh, that, that is the Hancock US. Um, and that is, um, as far as rigor goes, sort of in the middle between college prep and AP. Uh, so we sort of use that really as, uh, we try to recruit students from, uh, CP world cultures, for example. Uh, try to use that as a vehicle to give students the opportunity to do, um, honors level of college work for the first time, uh, without having to jump into AP US, uh, which is probably the hardest, uh, of all of these social studies and AP, uh, courses. So, if they have not done honors already, um, that's a much better option for them, junior year.
So, just a little, um, shout-out, if you will, to, uh, Mr. Wolf in regards to the concurrent role in the Hancock. I believe you were our first teacher-
Yeah, for concurrent, uh, during the day, yeah.
So, with the masters that met minimum qualifications for Hancock, uh, how many years have you been doing that now?
This is my fifth year.
Fifth year, so we only got that kick-started, um, and was the pipe hyper that we made that happen? It's all about who you hire correct, so that was really a difference-maker. We've now branched out. Um, and there's some of our freshman-focused classes and other, other things that have been taught in history, probably have been a part of that as well. But he was our lead person on that, so, um, a little bit of a legacy there for-
And so, I'm happy to see the success over the years, you know, this course becoming successful, and then now branching out into other departments. Uh, we've done a lot of, uh, CT courses and filled, um, multimedia and things like that in addition to Prash Core. Uh, so that's, uh, helping us out quite a bit. Uh, you'll notice when we get to senior year, there's a little bit of an, uh, an anomaly with this though, in the sense that they once again have three options or four. Uh, actually, because they have, have the option of taking AG, Gov, and Econ. Uh, or they can take CP, Government Econ, uh, with Mr. Doherty, uh, or they can take AP, Government, uh, if they want to continue on their honors track. Or they can take, um, the Hancock Gov Econ, um, as a sequence, so they either take Econ in the fall and then Gov in the spring or vice versa. Uh, but the anomaly here would be that the, uh, senior class, uh, is a night class taught by, not by, um, a credential department member, in fact, not taught by a member of the school staff. So, we don't have, um, as a department, oversight over that course. Um, that is, uh, it's a Hancock instructor teaching about that. Uh, and the same goes for, uh, AG, uh, Econ, it's not, it is taught by a, uh, a faculty member on campus, uh, but that is not going to be in our department. That is a course taught through the AG department. All right, so, um, to corporate sources of pride, well, first, let me just tell you a little bit about, um, our, uh, mission, our views, our philosophy, et cetera. So, our pedagogy, uh, we pride ourselves on a rich and diverse, uh, pedagogy that aims to address all learning styles through the use of, uh, multiple methodologies. So, by that I mean, we, uh, don't rely only on direct instruction, uh, but we like to bring in, or we pride ourselves on bringing in and utilizing a wide array of instructional strategies, uh, in order to engage multiple styles of learning, right? So, all students are in semantic learners where they just read something and remember it, or, you know, they might be, uh, visual learners, audio learners, et cetera. So, uh, we also try to bring, uh, history alive, so we will do simulations, we'll do visual literacy where we're exploring through photographs, uh, we will do debates. Uh, we will have them create some blockbuster, um, summer movie trailers about historical events, uh, things of that nature. Uh, and our goal really as a department is to bring history alive for the students first and foremost, um, especially US history, that's our story. Uh, but also to, um, foster critical thinking skills in particular, uh, and, uh, an understanding of civics, uh, to, uh, enable them or help them become, uh, more effective citizens, uh, you know, in the youth society effectively as adults. All right, uh, and then, uh, I'll let Gregory speak just a little bit about his successes with, um, Prash Focus.
Yeah, um, my philosophy when it comes to teaching is let's have some fun. And, um, I think we learn better if we're having a good time, and if we're not learning anything, at least we're having fun, so. Uh, for, for me, Focus on Success is kind of my, my, my pride. I, when we brought the program in five years ago, I took the lead on that and I built that, um, at least somewhat curriculum up. And a lot of success there. I think we can't teach our students enough financial literacy, enough of, um, real-life, um, skills. And that class encompasses it all, from everything from your basic career research to, um, college and post-secondary training for those that are going to be going out to college. So, it's a very in-depth course. A year, uh, a year might be better to teach it in, but I'll take the semester, I'm not complaining, I'll do it. Um, my personal, so, it's kind of the story that I have, it's just recently, we got done with about five weeks of doing a budget, a full monthly budget. Some people might think that is a long time, but for students that are, that don't have a lot of financial knowledge, they don't understand how expensive life can be. And I think, I most enjoy when I get an email from the parents after the budget, um, process, they said that their kid, their child came home and said, "Thank you." "Thank you for what?" "Thank you for all the things you do for me to be able to let me live my life for another month." So, uh, that is what I enjoy the most, the kind of the aha moments when the kids get it, or the kids realize, "I maybe don't want to grow up." And so, but that's, um, again, I'm most proud of Focus on Success, I, I believe that class is doing, um, wonders for the students and their literacy on just plain living their lives in general.
Sure, all right.
Sort of piggyback a little bit on what, uh, Mr. Gandolfo was saying, um, I try to pick up where he leaves off, he works with the freshmen. And of course, I get him with seniors in economics, and I too am finding that that is an area that we need more work on in this school and probably most high schools, is financial literacy. So, with Greg's help at the freshman level, uh, I try to pick that up with seniors, that it really becomes important at that point, because they're almost out of their own. In fact, I, every once in a while, I have seniors that are actually moved out in their own apartment already, that's pretty rare. But every once in a while, I get a kid that turns eighteen and says goodbye to mom and dad, and they're still going to high school and they're trying to manage an apartment and have a job and go to school. And so, I really try to do my best to not only teach the mandated requirements from the state that will help them when they get to, uh, college and their economics classes there, but I also try to bring in an element of, uh, economics that's more personal, such as, uh, Mr. Gandolfo was talking about. And so, I really try to do a good job of incorporating both the academic side of economics, which can be quite extensive and difficult, but also the, uh, side where, as far as just living, day-to-day. And I've actually been able to bring a couple of people in from the community, uh, Mrs. Harmon, for example, who comes in and we, uh, have her, uh, work with the kids a little bit. Financial literacy and trying to, uh, help the kids to, uh, really understand kind of what life is about. Um, I love the value, um, I love what it represents, but, uh, not to say this in a disparaging way, but I think the kids here are kind of living in a bubble. I don't think they sometimes really know what true life is like. And I think it's good for them to be exposed to, to, uh, more of the real-life situations out there, and so, uh, I try to bring that to the table and hopefully help them so they can not live at home until they're twenty-five or twenty-six years old. Hopefully, at some point, when they're still young, get out and be able to be productive citizens. And so, uh, we try to do different project, kind of work, they're working on an entrepreneur project right now. Because I'm hopeful that some of these kids will be our entrepreneurs of tomorrow. And so, uh, they're right now working on that, in fact, next week, we do presentations on that. And every once in a while, that's pretty rare, let's be honest, but every once in a while, we actually have kids that come up with an entrepreneurial idea in high school, and they actually make it come to fruition. I had a couple of kids who made a lot of money out of some of the ideas they came up with when they were seventeen, eighteen years old, and that's always fun to see. Uh, probably the most, uh, enjoyable part of my job, and I think it is for all teachers, but especially for me, teaching, uh, sophomores and seniors, is I have the joy of having some of the kids twice. And I have found that when they have me as a sophomore, they think I'm very hardcore, they think I'm too tough on them. When they're seniors, they really think that because I've become even tougher on them. But the thing that brings me joy more than anything else in my job is, um, I'm very pleased to say that I have a number of kids, when they're older, when they're older, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, they come back to me and say, "Thank you for the things you taught me, and it's really helped me in my life." Uh, not "thank you for the tests" or "thank you for, you know, the homework you gave," I don't get that too often. But just some of the real-life lessons that we try to teach in, uh, the Entrepreneur Project, which is one of those things, I've also done cart-buying projects with them. Sounds simple, but other than a house, a home, which unfortunately, some people in our economy today may never experience buying a home, even though we talked about that too, is, uh, buying a, a car. So, we actually have done cart-buying projects or something like that. So, anyway, we try to do something to really, really make their experience here worthwhile for the rest of their life.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doherty, uh, so we have just a couple of, uh, points to make here, uh, and then we'll wrap up. So, next steps for growth, uh, where do we want to go from here? Well, uh, in an ideal world, uh, we would like to see some, uh, new course offerings. Um, the strategic plan indicates, uh, or identifies, um, the need to, uh, increase or maintain increased rigor and options, of course. Uh, so we have, uh, issues with staffing, um, and it doesn't fit into the schedule for one thing, to add new courses. But in an ideal world, we would be able to offer more diverse variety. Um, some examples would be AP Sci, there's, um, been a fair amount of student interest in that over the years, AP Art History. Um, and then things that are just applicable to, uh, you know, going out to the world, preparing them, uh, things like streetball, et cetera. Um, uh, we would like to see it, uh, again hypothetically, in an ideal world, all of the courses, uh, in our department actually taught by department members. Uh, so, yeah. Street law, um, so knowing your rights, right, like knowing the laws and knowing your rights. So, uh, as a citizen, right, if you engage with law enforcement, for example, uh, you know the laws, you know your rights. So, street law, that refers to that, uh, knowing your individual rights, um, when you're out in the public. Uh, so, they would fall under category of civics, basically, yeah. Uh, so, we would like to see all courses taught by, uh, department members, and this speaks to the, uh, again, the issue of, of rigor. This is called out in the stra- uh, strategic plan as well, maintaining, uh, rigor. And also identifies the possible need to evaluate, uh, concurrent enrollment courses, uh, to, uh, ensure rigor as well. Um, so there can be challenges with that with the night classes, as I said. Uh, over the years, there have been, um, the reputation of the government class, I should say, uh, has been among the students that it is easier, uh, the Gov, the night class is easier than, um, college prep with Mr. Doherty. Uh, so if they're getting college credit for that, uh, we believe that it should be, you know, colored so the rigor, and, uh, if we don't have control over that in the sense that it's not taught by a department member, uh, there's nothing we can really do about that. So, we'd like to see that brought into, uh, a day course as well, uh, but again, that would face, um, issues of, of staffing, uh, so we don't have, um, staff or sections available to even do that. Uh, but one of the reasons for that would be, uh, we are short, uh, a member, Harvey Green retired, what, four years ago? Three, three years ago. And his position has not been filled. Uh, so if we were to fill that, that could potentially, um, open up some of these options, possibilities, right, in course offerings. Um, bringing the Gov, uh, the senior Hancock classes into, um, the daytime, et cetera. Uh, and, uh, large class sizes, this is sort of across the board, but we've experienced this a little bit as well. Uh, so we'd like to, you know, see them capped, uh, and then brought down if possible. Um, and then, uh, increasing the night class rigor, I already mentioned. Uh, and then the last two points would be increased focus on civics education, again, I think that has, uh, partly to do with the fact that we have about a third of our seniors, I'm not sure exactly what the issue is, that take the Hancock Gov class. But I've had many of my own students, um, uh, who I had junior year, or students who were in ASB as seniors, tell me they basically don't learn anything, uh, in that class because it's an open book, take-home exam, um, attendance is not required, uh, et cetera. Uh, so we'd like to at least ensure that they are engaging, uh, the, uh, curriculum to some extent. Uh, and then finally, uh, sustaining the AP program. So, uh, we're not necessarily facing challenges here as far as losing the AP courses, uh, but the strategic plan does call for, uh, increasing enrollment in AP courses. And we actually have seen in the, uh, Social Studies Department, some decline in AP enrollments. Um, some of that has to do, I think, with, um, the Hancock courses being a little bit of a drain, so we do have, we will see, um, juniors, for example, who may have taken and passed AP Euro, opt to then take the Hancock junior class to lighten their load because of the other AP classes, uh, which is fine, it's personal choice or whatever, but that does, that affects, uh, the numbers of our AP program. Uh, and also, I should say, you know, I try to recruit out of CP, bring students up into the honors realm. Um, so the more students we have coming out of AP into Hancock, is then taking away space from drawing other kids out. So, I don't know if there's, you know, necessarily a solution to that, but that is, uh, a dynamic that we face with having those two layers now.
Great question. Well, you're talking large class sizes, what are you talking about this year, average class sizes, if you can give me that?
So, yeah, so it's not that it is up to a ridiculous point, but it's that we've just seen a steady increase. So, when I, when I started, for example, with the Hancock courses, mine, three sections were like twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and then the second year was like thirty, thirty-one, and now we've got to where they're just thirty-five, they're full, right? Um, I think, what-
I was gonna say, uh, same thing in my classes. Um, I've been here, as I said earlier, thirty years, and I've just seen, one of the beautiful things about this school was, uh, back just not too many years ago, it was typical for us in social studies to have twenty-seven, twenty-eight kids in a class, which is very manageable. You can do a lot more things with those kids. And now, they've gotten to twenty-eight, twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three, and now I'm averaging thirty-three kids per class, averaging. And I have one class of thirty-five, and when you get thirty-five kids in a class, or even anything over thirty, as those, a couple of you know that were teachers up there, it makes it really hard to have a rigorous curriculum that would challenge the kids. So, we really need to keep an eye on that. I know it's a budget issue, but we're supposed to be better than that.
Thanks. All right, yeah, so that's, uh, our presentation, question, second.
Keesha has one question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Wolf, I really appreciate you having the, the, uh, college credit in Hancock, uh, US classes. As a, as a parent of a student who's presently going to your, through your department, um, every dollar that can be saved down the road with college education, we appreciate it. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. A second shout-out, Mr. Doherty. Um, we just heard earlier tonight from, uh, patron, Lammy Johnston, who, um, expressed her frustration of a, of a lack of neutrality in issues of, of politics. And my daughter has many times told me that you go above and beyond to try to remain neutral, you involve the kids in political discussions, and many times, she's, uh, unable to know where you personally stand, so, uh, thank you very much for walking that line. And then my, my question, uh, and it, it may be two answers, one is it pertains to the conventional classes, and then the same question is it pertains to the Hancock US class. The question is, briefly describe the process on selecting which textbook our children will be using.
Uh, so, the textbook selection, well, we have, we would have two choices. We, for Hancock, we would either choose, uh, the textbook that the Social Studies Department at Hancock has chosen, or we would request to approve our own text. Uh, and, and so, in the case of the Hancock class, we used, um, the AP, the same text that we used for AP US, is where we had them. Uh, and it's, they cover, it covers the same curriculum, and so they approved that. Um, as far as I know, it would be a matter of the department selecting texts, uh, but we have not gone with any new texts since I've been Department Chair. So, I don't know if that would require a sort of discussion with you or approval, but I think- think it's just a preference of the department. Although the texts do have to be approved, right? So if you're, if they're for an AP course, they have to be AP approved. If they're just for CP, they have to be California approved. And then Hancock, it has to be approved by their department.
California regulations from the CDE encourages textbook selection committees made up of parents. And so I would encourage the department, the next cycle of, when textbooks are being reconsidered, to make sure you engage the parents, however, as possible.
Any other questions? Chris?
To be able to teach a Hancock course, you have to have the equivalent of a master's, is that right?
Correct. In the, in the subject, yes.
Contender.
They're container.
Yes, we have some teachers that have a master's in education. That does not mean they don't have qualifications. We have in history, the U of M has qualifications.
The TCU, yes.
Is there anyone in the department that is working towards that, if that we see you would like to have our own people?
Oh, right, for the gov class?
Right.
Not currently, but even if we, so it would still be a staffing issue in the sense that we would have to add those sections into our overall department workload. And we already are all, you know, the five department members already have a full five sections each. So we would, even if we had, you know, if we, one of us had that degree, we would stop and hire somebody else to take the sections we would be giving up to teach that. So it's not just a quick, easy fix, and there are, you know, it's a financial issue also.
Thanks, all through.
Thank you very much, John.
Can I add one more thing, real quick? I'm not sure how much the board knows about this, and I just think you should be aware of it. In my classes, at least, I can't speak for the rest of the department, but we're doing more and more co-taught classes, which means we're working with a consortium in special education, and we are bringing in cases where we have a large number of sped kids in our classes, in our CP college prep classes. We are working with a consortium to assist with us. And I just wanted to make sure that the board is aware that we need, in my opinion, having done this for five years, more oversight than that, because we, as of right now, it doesn't seem like we have a lot of control over who the consortium hires, and they're being brought in to teach our kids. And some of the times, the people that are brought in that went to the consortium aren't fine. My first three years in the program, I thought it went quite well. The last couple of years, quite frankly, it has not. And it just really troubles me that we are seeming to not only lose control with Hancock, but losing control a little bit with the consortium and not having the quality at times of education that we had prior to this. And also the sheltered classes. In my classes, embedded within the CP, not only do I have the sped kids and have the consortium that I work with, but also I have sheltered kids. That's kids that do not speak English. And quite frankly, I don't speak any Spanish. And so when you have these class sizes of thirty-two, thirty-three, thirty-five kids, and embedded in there, you also have sped kids with people that sometimes aren't really qualified to assist you in the right way. And then you also have kids in there that don't speak English with a teacher, in my case, who doesn't speak Spanish. Let's just be frank, this is not an educational system that is worthy of Saninett's High School. And I'm just finding that we are kind of, I think, missing the boat a little bit here, especially when it comes to both the special ed kids and our CP kids. So I would just urge the board to do what you can to try to exercise more control on some of these issues, because it has really been a major problem in the last couple of years. So I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. So, thanks very much to the social studies department there, part of the stuff that you have going on here. Would like to also really do an update on that in public as well. In regards to all of growth, charge school, our hard work has paid off. We do have a July appointment on the agenda with the state board in the case to make our cases exactly the position that we want to be in. And it also gives us time to prepare more on some of the things to be before the state board. So we're in a very fortunate position on that. We have some more details on that in the closed session as well, and some of the other pieces associated with that. The other thing I would like to talk about is campus safety. Obviously, we're in the middle of a very high-profile issue regarding a yearbook consultant that has been on this campus, that has been arrested and is currently in jail. One visit on campus this year, according to our yearbook advisor. But I asked, I'm gonna ask Mr. Swan if he would just let you know, what do we do, if we have somebody on campus that is a guest, or they're here as a consultant, they're here as a, you know, a guest speaker, or they're here as a volunteer, just to share a little bit of that with you, so you know, I have a certain warrants on the conversation, and anytime something like this occurs, it's always a good time to reflect on school safety. And so we just want to talk about that with you a little bit.
Sure. For years, we had a sign-in process for visitors, and that means that they go to the student services desk, whether they're coming on campus to go to an IDP, or they're coming on campus to meet a teacher, they're coming on campus anywhere outside of this building, if they're gonna be out there, they would sign in so that we would know, you know, have a record of it. That's a great system, it doesn't tell you very much about who's on your campus other than their name. This year, we instituted an identification scan system. So we have a system called Raptor. Guest comes into our office, they're required to provide a valid form of people ID, could be a driver's license, could be any number of things, passport, state ID, lots of different kinds. Gets scanned through the system, that scan is then checked against the database, and anyone who has a violent criminal record, or who has sexual offenses, would be tagged, and a red flag would come up on Mrs. Garcia's screen, and she would be able to then have the person to just take a seat for a minute, and walk over and give Mr. Hawes or myself to come and address the situation, and we would not allow that person on our campus. That, of course, presupposes that the person already has a criminal record. So in this case, our yearbook representative, when he would come on campus and scan his ID, did not have a criminal record, so we would not have, it would not have been flagged. However, there is a record kept that way of students, of visitors to campus, and where they're going, and it prints out a badge with their face, a picture of their face on it, sticker that goes on their chest, what time they came on campus, what time they're expected to leave. So it's actually a very thorough system, and that's for visitors that come on campus for whatever reason, on a daily, on a periodic basis.
Is destination also on that?
Yes, it is. Where they're supposed to be going. So if they're found in another area, campus security knows to look and spot those, and it's, that's pretty easily visible, saying, okay, this person's supposed to be in the library, why are they out in industrial yards? Helps with...
Can't park, do you catch, I mean, it's a relatively open campus, so, you know, unless they come into the office to check in, you know, how do we cover that parking lot, all those points and that?
That's our, that's our security guys keeping an eye out for people. We've also talked to our staff and said, if anybody shows up in your classroom and hasn't been through the office, don't have a conversation with them, don't do anything with them, send them up. If they refuse to go, call the office. We have an emergency hotline member who's supposed to call the office for support. So it requires the effort of everybody to be able to enforce that policy, but it's also for the benefit of everybody. So we've had good luck with that, in that teachers will send, you know, parent shows up at their room, wanting to have a conversation about their kid, they'll send them back up to the office. First of all, we don't point that at anybody who just show up on the teacher's doorstep. Sometimes with special education students, they have closer interaction with a special education teacher, for example, or they drop them off at their classroom personally every morning, whatever, we have to ask them to go through that process of checking.
So, Mr. Swan, it sounds like what you're saying, that with the new measures we've instituted, if tomorrow this pedophile shows up here on campus, he would still have the same ability to get into mischief as he did the last year?
Because he's not been here yet, that's correct.
So that's really the question we should be discussing.
The...
What are we gonna do to prevent this from happening again?
I don't know how you prevent something that you have no foreknowledge of, but the second part of this is anybody who is a regular participant on campus, somebody who volunteers on a weekly, or semi-weekly, or even that, as a coach and a daily basis, they have to go through a fingerprint scan, which runs their criminality, or their fingerprints against the Department of Justice database and provides you a report, and the FBI database.
And that's been done with everybody that's currently on the payroll here on the campus?
Anybody who has a regular interaction with, with students. So that's, that's the, the typical example of that is coaches. We have a lot of volunteer coaches who work on campus every day with kids. The volunteer coaches, as well as the walk-on aid coaches, everybody is an employee, has been through that fingerprint scan, and also the volunteers are scanned. If there's somebody who volunteers on a weekly basis in the avid classroom, for example, they would go through the fingerprint scan, not the sign-in every, every day.
And just a question, anytime that you see a consent agenda approval of coaches, if there is a qualifier under this that's pending, you know, basically, can they clear all of those hurdles first with DOJ and FBI before they go?
So what's the protocol? If somebody is tagged, they have a criminal pass, but let's say it's thirty years ago, and they are completely rehabilitated and are an outstanding member of society?
The system would let us know that they have, that that record exists, and then it would be, you know, an administrative decision about what we're gonna do about that. If it's a guest speaker, an outstanding member of the community, that had something on their record from years ago, and it was, well, I mean, it's a, the thing, the system doesn't flag everything. It flags violent offenses, and it flags sexual offenses. So we would have to make an informed decision, knowing what was on the record, about whether or not that person was gonna interact with us or not.
And I have something too, for the, for the audience here, you may not know this, I, I taught for twenty-five years here at Saninett's High School, and it was actually, the teachers have been, they're mandated reporters, and they listen very carefully. And in fact, it was the excellent work of one of our teachers here, who overheard a conversation that rang bells, and she immediately went to Mr. Swan, she immediately went to Sheriff's Office. And that's the way the system's designed to work, and it's, that part is effective, because you have, what, fifty, fifty-two teachers on campus, and every single one of them have been trained to report things and to keep those...
The next one, please, is back.
Everybody, everybody's been right. Everybody's been right.
And her system also alerts us if new offenses come up. So HR would get an email if something were to come up. So if one year they're printed, you're fine, and then something subsequently comes up, HR's gonna...
And the, the other part about, about being a mandated reporter is, that's important to note, is mandated reporters are reported, actually report anything suspicious, anything that they have any concern about, they are not investigative, there's no investigative responsibility, they simply report what it is, there's a form you fill out, there's a number you call immediately, a follow-up with a form in twenty-four hours. And so if, meaning if you do a child abuse, or, you know, in this case, a, a allegation of a new property corporate sexual contact, any kind of, you know, neglect, anything that you overhear, even if you don't even overhear, if somebody's coming to school with, or hiding, and it looks like they're not being cared for, oh, you report that, and then Child Welfare Services or Law Enforcement or the appropriate agency investigates that. So we all know that mandated reporters, we don't mess around, we have a legal obligation to report that. So we have, you know, campus security, we have levels of teachers and classified staff on campus, they're all responsible for keeping an eye out, protecting our kids, and that's absolutely right, in this, in this case, the system worked. Right?
All right. Thank you.
Whoever that teacher, she deserves to have a letter put in her file to be made here for that, maybe, or done.
Let's go on to item D, the consent agenda, and the floor may approve that guest speaker slip for B to F. Michelle, word.
Hi, again. I just want to apologize for my motion, my first public comment. We just spoke to Kathy Rick on the phone this week, and I was pretty upset after my conversation with her. This is regarding the memorandum that's been submitted for the Sequel study to the Aquatic Project. It's been submitted to the board and states that it's prepared by Superintendent Corey. Following the background information, the memorandum states fiscal impact not available, funding source not available. There is a seventy-seven-page mitigated negative declaration and a traffic study included in this board packet. I could not find anywhere an invoice for the work done or who paid for it. Where is the transparency? If you're going to vote to approve this consent agenda item, don't you, as school board members, want to know how much these reports cost and who's paying for these reports? The school district is in the business of academics, and not in the business of the recreation center. The voters may miss clear, be wise with other people's money. Given the structural deficit and cutting of staff and educators, educators positions, the district should be spending, should not be spending general fund money on pool project. That should be a hundred percent privately funded. There should be no public funds for increase in costs of maintaining a new pool complex, including additional maintenance personnel. Also, private funding for solar energy is a must for this swim stadium. I respectfully request that you revisit the MOU that the previous board signed, given the district's uncertain financial position, growing deficit, and like Superintendent Corey said, we are headed for insolvency with the all of growth situation. Pool expenses are adding up, but more importantly, my concern is that Superintendent Corey is selective in sharing information with the public and the school board's education. I don't know who's paying for this negative debt, or how much it costs. Do you?
No district funds have been expended in any way, shape, or form. Only the facilities have been paid through donations to the Saninett Valley community to finance the mission.
Thank you for the clarification.
Can I ask some questions as we're on the subject?
Can I offer one more question for you, Senator?
Okay.
The funds come from the Saninett Valley Aquatic Foundation to the district, and then the district writes the check out. So if you were to go back in, in purchase order laws or check laws, you will see checks out of the general fund for these things, but the funds came from Saninett Valley Aquatic, and you can research those deposits as well, but it will appear as if the checks are coming out of general fund.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you.
So do I have a motion to, John?
I have some questions, unless you want to wait till a discussion?
You want to wait till discussion? Let's, let's get a motion a second to discussion. Thank you, John. Do I have a motion, please, for consent agenda? Okay, I may.
Seven.
Chris? Motion a second to approve the consent agenda discussion before we vote, John?
And so I would like to introduce a guest, Nancy Corrigan. Meeting for the first time, we talked on the phone, exchanged emails, she was responsible for helping us with the sequel study. And so if there are any questions specifically related to the study, she can help us work through that. So just to let you know, she's here as a resource.
Thank you very much. I personally don't have yet, I haven't made up my mind how I feel about this. The two chairmen of the SYV CAF, are close friends of mine, that being Chris Hartman and Bruce Porter, that I also am hearing a lot from my constituents, who they don't care where the money is, is coming from. There are so many other issues that they are not comfortable with, that convinces me there is a sizable, if not majority, in the valley that are not supportive of this pool, even if the foundation was able to fund it upfront one hundred percent. So with that as the disclosure, here are some of my comments. Scott, in your weekly update dated March twenty-second, regarding the pool, you said, and Murtha Pool Architect that was, that originally worked with the original design. I thought that I recalled weeks ago you telling me that frankly, the original architect we used were completely unskilled, inappropriate, and we had gone down the wrong path with that individual. This sounds like we're still using them.
No, this is, this is not that architect at all. This was a firm, firm that was hired to do just the sequel study, not associated with architecture.
Okay. Now, the materials that Laura, you sent me, I appreciate that very much. By my count, the sequel report was seventy-seven pages, the firma report was thirty-nine pages. And I started looking at it, there are mitigation monitoring reports for removing approximately fourteen oak trees, there's ARBA reports, there's reports about how to compensate for each tree that's removed. There are ornithology reporting requirements to see how many live nests there are in each tree. There are detailed traffic engineers' analyses, impact statements, there's CHUMASH antiquities surveys, there's environmental impacts, which are hugely, hugely detailed. There's air quality reporting, greenhouse emission reporting, sound quality reporting, hydrology analyses, water drainage, storm impact, geology, soil, mineral reports, and seismic analyses. There's impacts, impact studies on how the pool will affect the neighborhoods, how the pool will affect public services and utilities. There are wildlife impact studies. There's even studies on asbestos and hazardous materials, and the one I appreciate is a plastic surgeon. There's also the survey for the S study, impact on the community. My head was absolutely spinning on all of this. And so I guess my question is, this resolution or motion that we're gonna be voting on tonight, what, what is it that the board has decided to do? How, as a guy like me that admits that I have yet to decide if I'm supportive of the project or not, how am I expected to vote tonight? How am I expected to vote if there was no human... How am I expected to vote if there was no humanly possible way I could continue my professional practice and diligently gone through all the materials that you folks sent? That's my long question.
So, just as a precursor before, please, I'll let you give a bit of a quick example. The.
Thank you.
By virtue of approving the CEQA study, that has no bearing on whether or not we're approving the pool project, uh, but given that it is on, this is a study on school property, we needed to bring that before you, but it's not saying, hey, approve the project or don't approve the project.
Don't we have the card before the horse? Why are we doing all this work if it turns out that the pool is not going to be approved?
My name is Lindsay Kurica. I am the principal for Wiconsol Sync. We're environmental planners and landscape architects. Our office is in San Luis Obispo. Um, since nineteen ninety-six, we've been practicing in the valley, in San Barbara and San Luis Obispo County. So, we're established here and aware of the environmental issues. And we have worked for many small school districts, so we're aware of the issues that are relevant to San Luis and all districts. So, to respond to your questions about the card before the horse, um, this CEQA analysis, and CEQA is California Environmental Quality Act, has nothing to do with the facility and whether the facility is approved or rejected. Um, right now, the facility is at a master plan level and the pool is part of a campus master plan. So, what the district entered into real affirmative to do was do the environmental analysis for the pool project and parking configuration only, which is a component of the master plan, which it states in the environmental document is still very preliminary. So, regardless of if the project moves forward or not, CEQA is required by the law and the district could not move forward to even think about the project without knowing the environmental impact. So, you spoke about different impacts and different things we analyzed in the document under CEQA. And to speak to fiscal, fiscal impact is not an environmental impact, so I could not speak to that. Um, but as far as everything else that you mentioned, air quality, biological resources, groundwater, traffic, we analyzed all of those. Um, and archaeology, because this is a sensitive zone, culturally, archaeologically, and historically. Um, so basically, the proposed project is in a previously developed area of the campus. Therefore, the environmental sensitivity is determined less than significant. Um, and this that you have, the mitigation monitoring reporting plan, is essentially the summary of what the district must do. So, the big document, all the traffic study and everything, is what was circulated and went to all the state agencies, Fish and Wildlife, and everyone. So, really, it's what was required to do this project regardless, um, a part of the master plan project. So, you mentioned a visual impact study. We completed that as part of this analysis. We consulted with the Air Pollution Control District. We thought about the children and for the students and children nearby at the YUCA or anyone who lives in Aragus. So, those are the studies we did. Um, and there's really only one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, eight mitigation measures that have been determined to reduce the environmental impact to a less than significant impact. Um, and those would be aesthetics, um, to have downshielded lighting and not impact the nighttime sky for the oak trees because, um, there are fourteen oak trees out there along the road that may be impacted by doing new construction of the parking lot. We considered those, even though there's not a plan that says they are for sure removing those trees. We wanted the district, if a parking lot plan is introduced and they want to remove any of those fourteen trees, this document covers that and you not be violation. Um, the only part with the oak trees is that there could be a nesting bird in it. So, if that's all you have to do is have a biologist look or do your construction outside nesting bird season to avoid having to do any further biological study. Um, we did enter into consultation with the Schumash trend and so we did, although there wasn't any impact found in the document, the cultural resources during consultation, um, we added mitigation measures to require cultural tribal monitoring, um, because of the sensitivity of the area. So, those, those impacts that you see here and those monitoring requirements for cultural were requested by the San Luis and Schumash leaders. Um, and then hazardous waste is just something because that pool, the existing pool, we could not verify the age of the pool. Therefore, you would be required to do some surveys to make sure you're not going to pick up some hazardous material during construction of the pool. So, in some ways, this isn't to say you're approving the project or not. It's just saying these are what we found to be the potential environmental impacts and how you would reduce those to a less than significant level.
Thank you, Lindsay.
And other questions on the environmental document?
I want to compliment you on addressing the issue with the trees and nesting birds, whether we move the trees or we don't move the trees.
Yes.
Because that is kind of a critical piece and that also could be a sensitive issue for people in the community. So, thank you for doing that.
This is going to soak tremendously. If we, if we knock out all these trees, if we knock out all these trees, that is going to significantly damage the, if you want to talk about aesthetics, the aesthetic of this campus.
There's going to be like a do-over right then, Tom.
Okay. Because I am a tree hugger. I'm proud of it. And is, the, the previous concern, Scott, that you've talked to me about was the pool, uh, where it's drawn in on this diagram suggests that it's still awfully close to, uh, the old gym.
That's correct. It's, in fact, it's, it's too close and so there will be modifications.
So, whatever we vote tonight, I'm assuming we're, we're going to all vote for this. That in no way locks us into this design.
No. I already have a conversation about what the design might look like. It doesn't lock us into it.
Chris, yeah, question?
I just want to say that I, I'm glad that this has been done, which was done in a more time than ever, but it's done now. Yeah, that's good because whether we move again with what we have been looking at or something on a lesser scale, uh, we couldn't do it without this. And, uh, and that's important in this pool. Um, I taught here for thirty years and I know how important that pool is and its failure, that we need to address.
Scott, could you, um, at the earliest time possible, invite both Chris Hartman and Bruce Porter to come and give a PowerPoint display and, and then be available for the public to ask them pointed questions?
We'll be here, uh, sometime May or June. We'll have it here before the year's over.
Okay.
All right. So, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Laura, it's a roll call. Dr. Baker.
Consent agenda. I thought what we were voting on right now was just.
It's included in consent.
Okay. Well, then I'm not here with discussion. Forgive me.
Okay.
Um, I would like to, to change, uh, item one A, uh, four, uh, as far as approval of minutes from March twelfth. And as it relates to myself, I would like, uh, the entry to read as follows. Am I being recorded? Okay, then I'll, I'll email this to you later. Uh, Dr. Baker, you read a report regarding misinformation in public commentary during recent budget cutback discussions. Uh, the current, uh, minutes says that, uh, Dr. Baker, you read a letter, um, which was not correct nor did it properly characterize the contents of what I read here.
So, it was too brief? Is that what you're saying?
Not that it was too brief, it was just mischaracterized what I, what I said.
Okay. So, do you want to, you're just adding, making the change?
Correct.
Okay, to item one A four.
Correct.
All right.
That's the only discussion, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, John. All right. So, again, uh, motion to, and a second to approve consent agenda. Dr. Baker?
Aye.
Mrs. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Perkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everybody. All right. Let's go on to, uh, item action, item C. And, um, we have a speaker request. Mr. Ward?
Thank you, Jan. Uh, this is regarding final payment made on Measure K project for JR Baro heating and air replacement project. The total project cost is one point four million. Um, just for the public, I am on the citizens oversight committee for the Measure K bond, but I am speaking as a member of the public. My question to the board is, has the board concluded that the work that was completed in a sat, in a satisfactory manner and inspected the job and are satisfied with the result? There have been significant issues with the heating and cooling and installations and replacements. I received a message from a teacher regarding this issue. Here are some of the concerns that have arisen on campus and hopefully the board is satisfied that these concerns have been remedied. Number one, JR Baro replaced all fans in the ceiling units, but the school approved less expensive, though much noisier option than they could have used, essentially replacing the existing blowers with similar, though louder and less powerful, burning. The HBSE, uh, VAC contractors installed them and then audio tested them, saying they were within the school-approved parameters, which most likely they were. The problem is that they were much too loud to teach with. This has officially came up in the principal's council, but the decision seems to be, it was too late to do anything about it and it would cost a lot of money to address the issue. At first, teachers were turning them off, but then the district blocked teachers' access to controls, so they had to leave them on. As a response, some teachers have found ways to dismantle the units, units. Personally, I've not had any heating in my classroom since November. This report came to me in January before we did our annual report and our Oak Committee doesn't lead until June. It has been quite chilly. The current situation is that the units are too loud to turn on while teaching. Believe me, I've tried, but it's too cold to turn them off. Another issue related to heating and cooling is that everything is controlled from an off-site computer. Thus, when it gets hot, there's been no cold air and when it gets cold in the afternoons, cool air instead of heat, they have it coming out. Yesterday, there was a flood of emails from teachers who, in whose classrooms were in the seventy-eight to eighty-degree range. I received this message in January. I would like, I, it would be advisable to confirm that the heating and air project hasn't, uh, has improved working conditions in the classroom before final make payment for this one point four million project is made, made very much.
So, does there were actual references, two pieces here. First of all, the units were replaced in kind, um, our construction manager addressed.
I'm sorry.
Sure. All units were replaced in kind. Our construction manager actually addressed every single one of these. All teachers report as satisfied with, um, the noise levels in the classroom, including the one teacher that you referenced moved to work. Teachers have been given more control and reported to be completely satisfied. As far as the temperature change, we are a two-pipe system, several four-pipe systems. There is no ability to simultaneously run both heat and cooling, given the significant temperature swings that exist in this valley. There will be moments, even with the new units, where temperature variances will be, um, comfortable with our systems.
After we cut this check, um, is our warranty with the contractor or with the manufacturer?
With the manufacturer. Nothing's gone. And they, they have met all of their, um, actually they have gone above and beyond to be very responsive to, to our needs. And that's how we're in the situation, when teachers are satisfied with heat and the control of the heat as well.
Chris, uh, what is the, the time it takes for it to adjust? When, I'm thinking of winter in the room, maybe in the morning, then it's chilly and the wind is coming, how long?
Sure. So, before it was actually someone up from maintenance making the switch for that because it both can operate simultaneously. Um, now depending on, because we have digital controls now that all report to and are computed by a centralized system. And so, if there's more calls for cooling, it has a capacity to automatically switch to cooling. Keep in mind also the multiple different exposures in terms, in terms of our building types. So, we have portals. Uh, we have, you know, people that are in this building. So, with the multiple different, so we're not going to meet all of the needs. It is a step in the right direction, however, to have that computerized control of that. So, there is, when a majority of people are calling for cooling or heat, that works. It is much better than before.
Significant. And our, our teachers are, how, because they're not.
Digital controls allow heat to come on at preset times versus waiting for someone to show up and manually turn them on and taking time for the water to heat in the system or cool. We're in a much better place and we're saving more money.
The problem is sometimes it happens along gender lines. I've found very scientifically that over the years, girls prefer the classroom at seventy-two and guys prefer it at sixty-eight degrees. So, that, that is.
That's much larger issue. JR Marte cannot address that particular issue.
So, uh, thank you. And, uh, let's see. Is there a motion to approve resolution twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash eighteen regarding JR Baro Phase Two Modernization Notice of Compensation?
I move to approve.
As second? My name, Tori, is a second. Is there any further discussion? All right, Laura. Dr. Baker?
Aye.
Mrs. President?
Aye.
Mrs. Perkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And no one closes that phase of work done by JR Baro. We still have retention payments in place for other subcontractors.
Item two, which is the approval of resolution twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen dash twenty regarding acknowledging Proposition Fifty-One Bond Authority and Sufficiencies. Scott, would you agree to the eligibility?
Certainly. So, Proposition Fifty-One, if you know, we've been working, um, for the last two years, actually, on pursuit of our, um, eligibility, um, which is now upwards of a big twenty-five million dollars in matching funds for Prop Fifty-One. And we can use Measure K funds. The state does not care where the match comes from. So, any funds that are expended, um, count. Um, the, um, amount of money available, so as applications are submitted, those monies, those funds are encumbered for future payment from the state as they sell bonds. So, the amount of new construction money ran out, um, last year. Modernization funds were projected to run out, um, first in fall of this year, twenty nineteen. Um, applications were submitted so rapidly that that was backed up to June and it wound up being the first week of March. Um, we are still in DSA with our, our final phase of work associated with our third application. So, what this allows us to do is it acknowledges that, um, the funds have run out from Prop Fifty-One, but it's still, we will, when we have our, um, work, final phase of work come out of DSA, we will have, um, we'll submit our third application for the remaining of our funds. We're currently in line with our first two applications for approximately seven point two million, which is a good thing. So, we'll be receiving that. Um, but this will place us in mind, um, if and when there is another state bond that is successful currently for both twenty twenty election and twenty twenty-two, um, there are proposed state bonds that will be on the ballot. So, this will position us and put us in that queue for funding when and if those are approved. So, we just have to pass a resolution recognizing that, hey, you're, you're submitting this. Prop Fifty-One has been expended and accounted for and encumbered and you'll be in line for the rest. So, that's what matters.
Do we have a motion?
I also do. And I'd have to say I'm very happy that we have our first and second through line and being in a pipeline.
Yes.
Very, very fortunate.
Very second. So. Do we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, item two? Laura?
Dr. Baker? Aye.
Mrs. Perkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Perkins?
Aye.
Mrs. Beck?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you, everyone. Okay, on to D, discussion agenda, uh, item one, budget discussion, materials and supplies. Alicia?
By way of introduction, uh, given that this is the budget building season for next year, um, we wanted to be able to bring to you just an insight into where some of our funds are going throughout our negotiations process. Um, you've heard a lot about materials and supplies and, um, significant increases in expenditures. I asked Alicia if she would present on materials and supplies and just give you some insights and it will also take you some other places in terms of what exactly goes into building a twelve million dollar budget, um, for our district. And so, materials and supplies, Alicia, thank you for the time.
Okay. So, our budget is large and when you look at all the lines, it can seem overwhelming. So, we thought that the best place to start explaining would be after personnel costs. Typically, in a budget, you, you'll hear people say, oh, that's a one thousand, a two thousand, a three thousand, and it goes all the way on up through nine thousand. The one thousand through three thousand category consists of staff costs. So, salaries and benefits, one through three. So, since those aren't, um, we don't have as much control over those costs, we decided to start with the four thousands because those are things that we can directly address and, and make changes immediately without negotiations and that type of thing. So, so, let's go on. That's on.
Thank you.
Oh, right, you're making my speech up, kidding me. We're not connected, sorry, sorry. Okay. So when you're doing the budget, we have very, very long account strings. Our budget contains, I want to say, three thousand account strings that we have to look at when we're composing the budget. And the account strings are comprised of seven, seven distinct units separated by hyphen. That's an account. So these accounts, the way that we create them, the way that we categorize things, they are all outlined and we are directed by law to use the California School Accounting Manual. So how we characterize things, what coding we use and where they are put is directed by law. There's not a lot of discretion in that area. So you have to determine what type of a service or a category or a material it is, and it must go there. And the CCM is hundreds of pages and it gets very detailed and very specific. So there's not a lot of leniency, so you will often hear people say, well, they're just moving money around. They're putting it where they want, blah, blah. There's only so many places you can put the cost of pens. They can only go in four thousands. You can't put the cost of pens in a one thousand. Basically, you can't really inflate or change or deflate numbers by miscategorizing or, you know, choosing how you categorize expenditures. So the four thousand is only one unit of the seven-unit account code structure. So there are units for what fund or what, basically what checking account they come out of, what resource, which would be what specific protected pot of money, so on and so forth down the line. The most commonly used, commonly referred to string of the account structure is called the object code. And this is where regardless of what fund they're in or regardless of what, whether it's a protected or unprotected pot of money, the object code defines what the expenditure actually is. So a one thousand is salaries, two thousand is classified salaries, three thousand is benefits, and the four thousand are where we have all of our materials and supplies, regardless of the department, regardless of whatever it is, maintenance. A four thousand is a four thousand, whether it's maintenance, whether it's a board superintendent, a fiscal, it's just a four thousand. All of the four thousand object codes, so four thousand is a category, and it can be broken down into more specific lines, like a four thousand, forty-three hundred, which is like pens, rulers, paper, bolts, nails, screws, those types of things. Or forty-two hundred, which would be textbooks. And then even within forty-two hundred, it can go down even deeper. Is it approved textbook? Or is it just a reading book? What type of book? So you can get very, very detailed in the level of your object code and how you code those things. So the major object codes are listed here for you. I won't go through all of them, but that's for your reference what the major object codes are. They all roll up in all of our financial software systems, all the documents you will see into four thousands. So when you look at your financial documents for first interim, second interim, the original budget, you'll see a line that just says four thousands. So it will say four thousand through four nine 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 nine. So every material and supply in that fund, regardless of the department, will be in that line as one total line item. But know that that one line item can comprise hundreds of accounts and hundreds of different departments within that line item. So the numbers that I'm going to show you next, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on each slide because it's more for reference for you to go back, for you to review historical, but I did point out a couple that I'll stop on and just show you a trend. The numbers included here are only from our Fund O One, which is our general fund, and only from unrestricted dollars for the last, well, the current and the last prior two years. Because the restricted dollars, we are required to spend them in a certain way, so we don't have a lot of leeway with moving those around. So I'm only talking unrestricted general fund. In addition, the eighteen, nineteen amounts that you will see are to-date amounts. They're going to change before we get to unaudited actuals in the end of the year. It's just giving you a snapshot of where we are currently. We'll start with school admin, and I'll just explain the first slide so that you know how to read the next slide easily. So school admin would be the department, and then on the first column you'll see object code. And in school admin, we only really use three object codes. We have general materials and supplies, fuel and gas, and non-capitalized equipment, which would mean there's a dollar threshold for capitalized equipment, and it just, it changes the way that we do the accounting and how we add it to our inventory list. It's just a dollar threshold. So certain computers would be non-capitalized and others would go into tech, which would be a different account code. So in sixteen, seventeen, you can see school admin spent a total of twenty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars and some change. In seventeen, eighteen, it was twenty-three thousand, two hundred and sixteen and some change, and year-to-date, we're at twelve. We have been making a conservative effort to reduce spending, you know, cut the fat, so to speak. So you will see a trend across most departments downwards. There are a couple noticeable discrepancies, differences in certain departments, and we'll thumb that out for you.
Do you anticipate with reduction in, you know, a concerted effort to reduce, do you anticipate the twenty eighteen, nineteen total to be less than twenty thousand?
I'm hoping so. I'm hoping it'll be somewhere right around the twenty thousand. I expect it to be less than seventeen, eighteen, but again, we still have several months to go. Only God knows where we will go with that. Okay, so one of the noticeable exceptions would be guidance. In sixteen, seventeen, seventeen, eighteen, we had a major leak in our guidance office. As a result, we had to remove our guidance staff to temporary housing, and as such, there were costs associated with privacy panels and such because of the nature of the work that they do with students. We had to make sure that the privacy was there and that type of thing. So they are one of the exceptions to the downward trend in materials and supplies budgets. Okay. Board and superintendent, that's just, you know, anything related to board meetings and getting everything ready for our meetings and conferences and all those types of things. Again, downward trend. Superintendent, you see the same thing. There was a spike in seventeen, eighteen related to facilities and modernization and things that we needed to get done. So there were more expenditures related to that, so more presentations, more documents, that type of stuff. Business services, you see a huge decrease simply because we got ourselves situated. We had new employees, we had to get new tech, and we had new programs that needed to be run and set up. Once they were set up, we're good to go, so we see a downward trend there. Data technology, in sixteen, seventeen, we had a fifty thousand dollar SQL server go out unexpectedly. That's part of the buffer that we keep in our tech budget, so you'll see a downward trend there as well. Hopefully, nothing breaks before the end of the year, but we can keep that track. Maintenance, we have been making a conservative effort in our maintenance department to address maintenance needs and deferred maintenance. So that's why you see an upward trend for maintenance. We are giving more attention so that our bond monies aren't going away. So we're not just fixing it and letting it go. So we're making a conservative effort departmental with the bond funds and address those. Operations, this comprises all of the things required to have people use the facilities, both people on campus, teachers, students, those types of things, as well as off-site entities, the baseball fields, porta-potties, all random things, but related to the actual operations of facility, not maintenance, not fixing things. Athletics, you see athletics is pretty stable. I mean, we have, some years, we have more helmets to recondition. That's expensive. We have ailing equipment, that type of thing. So what I showed you was a highlight of some of the non-instructional department budgets. When you total just the instructional budgets, so just English, math, science, those types of department budgets, you see an upward trend. Now, you see a gigantic upward trend in the eighteen, nineteen year because in sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen, we still had restricted pots of money to spend. So it took expenditures that would have normally been housed in the general fund in, well, that would normally have been housed in unrestricted accounts to the restricted accounts. So now with eighteen, nineteen and all those funds expended, you see that jump. So this is more of where we would have been had we not received those restricted one-time monies.
Alicia, and that's kind of reflective of the loss of the ROP funds and materials.
Right, all of those. So we had CTEIG grant funds, which we're not calling it ROP anymore, but we had the CTEIG grant funds. We had the Educators Effectiveness and the College Readiness Block Grant. Three substantial restricted pots of money that we were using for these types of things that we have expired, so. And then district totals, you see just an ever-so-slight increase from seventeen, eighteen, and a decrease from sixteen, seventeen. So we're keeping pretty steady, and that plays a lot with the growing student body, more use on the facilities, and we're still trying to maintain a conservative materials and supplies budget so that we can address everything but not overspend. So examples of forty-three hundred expenditures, they're very, very, very widy. So you have things like air, gas, which is for our welding, our welding class, they have like condensed gas. They use Mad Hatter for the kitchen apron and Laguna clay for ours, and then you have McReal music. So every department's forty-three hundreds look vastly different. This is just a snapshot of some of the vendors related to the forty-three hundred expenditures that we discussed. The forty-three seventy is solely gas and fuel use for whatever department we're talking about. So this is the gas for maintenance to run their carts that they have on campus, their machinery, the leak blower, and all those things that run on gas. This is where those expenses are housed, in addition to the gas used for our fleet vehicles for field trips and conferences and that type of thing. Sports is a huge one with the vans. So the last example would be for our forty-four hundred expenditures, and these are the non-capitalized equipment, computer supplies, headphones, mics, keyboards, LaMotta technology, like I said, for like the SQL server and those types of things, surveillance cameras, printers, all kinds of a number of things. So they're very widy.
Oh, you see, just want to point out the chlorine G's. Going to the chlorine G's for the pool filtration has been a huge savings for the district.
Fantastic. We honestly, we thought it was one of those things that was too good to be true. We had a pool contractor approach us several times and said, we got the thing for you. It's safer, it's better for your kids, it's going to save you a boatload of money. And we were like, yeah, okay, thanks. And then we were like, all right, all right, all right, well, listen. So we met with him, we heard what he had to say, and we were like, okay, well, it's aging and it's breaking. We have to replace it. Why not take a chance and replace it with something that's this much better? So we replaced it, we replaced our controls. We have basically taken a system where we had to manually go out and have one of our guys exposed to toxic hazardous chemicals, pour him in the pool, take tests all day and all that kind of stuff. And then like as we had higher usage during the swim seasons, the pool would get cloudy and people would complain, and it was green and this and that.
Too much chlorine.
Too much chlorine. My eyes hurt, my bathing suits, we need new ones because they're damaged. The chlorine Genies don't use chemicals. They use salt. So basic rock salt, they put them in there, and it's amazing. And the kids do not come home smelling like chlorine, and I can attest, my daughter's on the junior swim team. Her eyes don't hurt, they're not red, their skin's not dry. So in this case, it was not too good to be true, and we are super stoked that we were able to get those in place. Yeah, and it is a huge monthly savings because those chemicals are very expensive, so. And we save on personnel because the person who was having to go out all day long, Milwaukee has it because it's automated. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Any other questions? Anything clear up about four thousands, object codes, that type of thing? Thank you for...
Thank you, Sarah.
So one of the big takeaways, just by way of summary, so we saw two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen, we had an infusion of one-time dollars from the state. Those are the kinds of things, as you look at year to year, or even first interim, second interim, that can cause the budget to look very fluid. We're making the best guess when we build a budget in June based on what we know of following, keeping in mind that our fiscal year is different than the state fiscal year, and all the legislation that happens is different than the federal fiscal year. So we're taking a best guess, and Alicia does a great job of doing that work, estimating the following year and even two years out beyond that. If it gets a little sketchy and you start hitting year three and anything beyond that, it's really dicey. But these are the kinds of things that we're trying to anticipate, a lot of moving targets. So it's good for you to know. It's one of the components of a budget like that.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Thank you for the question. So, thank you. Next discussion item is number two, Facility Effects. Scott, do you have something for us?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Okay, great. All right, let's go on to item E, which is Board Comments and Correspondence. Does anybody have comments or correspondence?
I have something nice.
Former student of ours, Nick Kennedy, who's now a student teacher here on campus with Cal Poly.
And he called me today and told me that he was selected to be one of the commencement speaker up at the College of Education when he graduates from the program in June. So he was very pleased and I'm really proud of him to be a commencement speaker at Cal Poly.
That's awesome.
All right, Laura, on the Board Comments and Correspondence. Okay, does anybody else have comments?